Happy Friday everyone, we're live once again with a wonderful activity this week. It is gonna be a Teachers' Day special because Teachers' Day special is obviously for Teachers' Day. Teachers' Day is coming up on next Saturday. Hi Anushka, hi Kushbu, very nice to see you. Yes, so we're gonna be making some lovely little cards, frames, whatever you wanna call it for Teachers' Day. So hi Gubuti, thank you for the thumbs up and it is absolutely lovely to see you guys all again. And as you know, we always have a special guest joining us. Hi Sahabia, hi Mama Talks, Mama and Rizu, it's wonderful to see you guys and you know, thank you all once again for participating so wholeheartedly in all of our activities. Hi Rida, and it's wonderful, Rida your pop art last time was so beautiful. It was wonderful to see that, we all loved it in our office right here. So we're just waiting for our special guest to join us. Hi Priyanka, hi Binal, very happy to see you guys. Oh, thank you, thank you Maybod Baby for that lovely comment. It makes our day when we're able to do something that you guys actually like. So Pranata, thank you for joining, you're very welcome Rida. So yes, we are just waiting once again for our special guests to join us. We're gonna be crafting together, creating together with us today because that's what create together is all about. It's wonderful to be able to do these activities with each other. So just give us a few moments, we're gonna just keep checking in to see if our guest is here. And as soon as we have them, we will get started. And I love all these waves that are coming in, Swati and Jeevi. Thank you so much guys, hello to you as well, Jasvinder, yes alright. So as we said, Teachers' Day is coming up on 5th September, which is when all of us in India celebrate Teachers' Day. And this year Teachers' Day is so much more special because this year everything's a little different. We're all learning new things, we're all adapting to the circumstances. And teachers as well have had a pretty different experience this year. Being able to remotely connect with kids is fantastic. And it's obviously a whole lot better than not being able to connect with kids at all, right? So it's wonderful to be able to connect with kids and be able to, you know, carry on education, carry on activity, carry on development in so many wonderful ways. So that is something which is fantastic and it's amazing how all these teachers are doing it. Yes, we will be celebrating Teachers' Day online in the new normal, Anushka, that is so true. That is so true and teachers hold such a special meaning in all of our hearts, right? I mean, I know I'm not in school anymore, but I still have so many people who teach me. Thank you Turn The Page Kid for joining. And we have so many teachers that are special to us, that hold special meaning, that in a way even if we're not traditional students today are still teaching us in so many ways. And even if, even if they're not teaching us right now, we still remember them. Like I still remember my teachers from school that have made a special impression on me. And I'd still love the opportunity this year to still wish them a very happy Teachers' Day as well. So we are gonna be doing these activities which are like little appreciation cards. As you can see, we've given a 3D effect to this with a simple paper folding based activity. And we've also written an interesting message, you can find one that makes more sense for you and use that. And I know you guys will probably see some of these things reversed, but when we turn the camera around, it'll probably be a little bit better. So yeah, so we're gonna be doing these activities and once again, there's gonna be a contest and a giveaway this weekend. And when we do the contest and give away this weekend, we would love to be able to see your creativity, your teachers. And it could be something along the lines of what we're doing, it could be something different if you like. But the whole idea is to be able to create an activity which is in appreciation of your teachers. So that's the main objective of this particular week's activity. We, in terms of materials that you're gonna need today, we have some papers. So we're using colored papers today, I have some colored papers cut up over here right now. If you have big sheets, then we can show you how we work with those as well. We have some pencil and eraser of course. And along with that, we're gonna be using a scale and a pair of scissors to do the cutting. We're gonna keep some random other materials handy to make this a craftastic experience. So we're gonna have a little pencil that we use for this design. Hello. Hi Deepi.
Hello, hello, how are you?
Very good and is that Sean and Stephen, are both of them here with us? Hi, how are you? Very good and very happy to see you, very lovely to have you guys here with us today.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, you are and I can hear you as well, which I guess obviously means that the others can hear you and see you as well. So fantastic, we're very glad that we could get this going and have you guys here with us. So thank you for joining. We have a whole bunch of people who've already joined us and are waiting to get right into the activity. So I thought that we could just jump right into the activity and then come back to talking a little bit about each other at some point in time as well. So does that work for you guys?
Yes, yes, and we have bought all the things ready.
Fantastic, so like you guys know, we are making these Teachers' Day appreciation mini frames or cards today. And yeah, I mean, if you guys are seeing this in the audience, if you guys, Sean, I don't know if your brother's here with us, is he here with us as well?
He's asleep, Stephen's asleep.
Oh, okay, no worries. So Sean, maybe you can pick one design and tell us which one would you like to start with, right? Do you want me to move closer? Can you see that?
Blue, the pencil one.
Okay, alright, we can do the pencil one. And if you guys in the audience have any requests, please do keep sharing that with us as well. And of course, we'd love to see your creativity through the process. So if you feel like changing the message or the activity a little bit, absolutely feel free to do that. That's the whole idea, we wanna see the creative stuff that everybody's putting together, okay? So I'm gonna switch off my camera so you can see my table a little bit more. And while I'm doing that, maybe, Deepi, why don't you tell us a little bit about what kind of wonderful activities do your kids like to do? Because we love following your blog and seeing all the wonderful stuff that you do with them. So tell us a little bit about what they like.
They usually love sensory play, usually they love doing a lot of sensory expression. Yeah, and now his current obsession is space, so he wants himself to think. So all the activities relating to space, we do a lot of crafts relating to that and then lots of origami.
Wow, that's wonderful. That's fantastic, so maybe, maybe, maybe your card can be a space themed frame or a space themed card as well, right Sean? I mean, I don't know, do you wanna write something different, like you're out of this world to your teacher or something else like that that you can think of? Maybe we can make a little planet or something as well in there. I'm sorry, could you say that again?
I like being on Saturn.
He likes to be on Saturn.
Oh wow, why, why, why do you like being on Saturn? What's being on Saturn like?
Because it has great temperature, it's very cold. I have never, I have never been to snow.
He's never been into the snow.
Okay, yes, I know, snow can be wonderful, that is, that is a wonderful experience indeed. And right now, we can't really travel much, but someday we shall and someday I'm sure you'll enjoy being in snow as well. But I think Bangalore is a nice place, you're in Bangalore, is that correct?
No, 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 we are in Goa.
Oh, you're in Goa, wow, that's, that's also very nice, I would love to be in Goa. Okay, alright, great, so let's go ahead and get started. I have a colored piece of paper which is about an A4 size, which is like the normal size that we use in our printers. So Deepi, what kind of paper are you using?
I have an A4 sized paper as well.
Okay, great, so because these are mini frames, what we're using is just about one fourth of A4 size. So I'm gonna do the folding and cutting from the A4 sized paper right now. So anybody who wants to see that can follow along as well. So if you have an A4 sized paper, we're simply gonna fold it twice. So this is fold number one. Right? And then we can go ahead and fold it one more time. So in the opposite direction this time, so what we have is fold number two. And if you guys know sizes of papers, then you probably know that half of A4 is called A5 and half of that is called A6. So that's just a little bit of paper sizing for you if you're interested in that kind of thing. But you don't have to know that, just once again, I'm gonna open this up and show you. So you have basically, if you fold it like this, you have four sections in your paper which are more or less equal. And what we're gonna be using is just one of these sections, okay? So go ahead and cut that out. Sean, how old are you?
I'm seven years old.
Yes, seven years old, wonderful, and do you do cutting yourself or does Mama help you?
I do cutting myself.
You do cutting yourself, so this is pretty easy stuff for you then, right?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic, fantastic. And are you enjoying this new style of online schooling this time? Yeah? And do you, do you, do you usually do something special for Teachers' Day?
Yes.
What do you do? Do you remember anything that you've done for Teachers' Day in the past?
I made a card.
Okay, very nice, that's wonderful. Flowers for teacher, how nice. And then this time, maybe you can send pictures of the card that you make for your teachers, right? Because we're probably not gonna be able to meet them in person, but it's still nice to be able to show them something that you've done, right? Okay, fantastic, so if we are ready with our paper, we can go on to the next step. Shall we go on to the next step, Sean? Yes, okay, perfect. So if you have, do you have a scale handy, like a paper scale or ruler? Okay, perfect, so I'm gonna draw a border on this. And the way I'm gonna do it is I'm gonna align the scale, match the scale to the edge of the paper. Okay, just match the scale to the edge of the paper and go ahead and draw a straight line. Hello Art Connection, hello Malika, very nice to see you guys. Alright, so we go ahead and we draw one line for one part of the border, good, so far so good, okay, awesome. And then turn your paper around and repeat that on all the four sides. So just four borders. Okay, so we have one. And one more. Alright, so when you're done with that, what you will basically see is something like this, which has a big fat border, yes, perfect, good job, very well done, fantastic. Okay, now, you're welcome, we don't need these squares, okay? So the squares that I'm just scribbling on, you don't have to scribble on them, I'm just scribbling on them to show you that these are the four squares that we wanna cut out from our paper, we don't want them, okay? So we'll just go ahead and cut that out. Thank you all for all the lovely hearts that y'all are giving us. It is wonderful to see all that love coming in, so thank you once again. And if you guys have any questions while y'all are going along, we would be more than happy to answer those for you as well. So please do go ahead and feel free to ask your questions. Hi Ria, thank you for the wave and Nihal as well. Alright, let me know when we're done with that, okay? Thank you for the hearts as well guys. Perfect, awesome, okay. So on one of the sides of the paper, we are going to make a pattern with any kind of sketch pens or felt pens or anything that you might have around or crayons. Good evening Tanya to you as well, anything that you wanna use. So we're gonna, you're gonna make some patterns, okay? So over here, we've had one example of patterns which has kind of dots on it. This one has waves on it, this one just has some straight lines. This one has a different design. And on the other side is where we write our message, okay? So do you wanna tell me what kind of patterns are you making?
He's making these.
Alright, looks good, so maybe I will go ahead and do that as well. And we're using a black color or which color are you using?
He's using the dark blue.
Dark blue, okay, alright. So I'm gonna try to follow along and do what Sean is doing. So waves is what we're making right now. And guys, you can literally do whatever you wanna do over here, it's just a way of decorating, so any kind of decoration is good. It's nice to just sit and this is kinda like doodling, right Sean, do you know what is doodling?
Yes.
Alright, yes, have you ever done anything, do you like to do drawing, doodling, things like that? Yes, yes, okay, awesome. Maybe if, you know, you wanna show us something at some point in time that you've done in drawing or doodling, we would love to see that as well. It's so much fun and relaxing to sometimes just do doodling and drawing and things like that, right? I mean, it's just simple stuff, but it's wonderfully relaxing to be able to do it.
Even if just learning to do doodling.
Yeah?
He just puts scribbles, it doesn't have to be real doodle.
Yeah, exactly, and it's so much fun, isn't it?
Yes, we got amazed to see him do that.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think that, you know, we actually are starting off in Create Together with a four session or maybe a five session, I'm not sure, program on doodling as well, where we're gonna do different types of doodling. We're gonna do abstract, we're going to do doodles in scenery, we're going to do it in a mandala style, we're gonna do some word based doodling also. So that's just something else that's coming up for those of you who are interested, y'all can get in touch with us about that also. Are you done with one side Sean?
I'm done with both sides.
Oh wow, that was quick, okay, I better hurry up, alright, I'm gonna hurry up as well, okay, cool. And we're doing, we're doing the same design on two sides, is it?
Yes.
Alright, and for the other two design, for the other two sides, should we change and do some different design?
Should we change the other sides?
Yes, at the side we'll do the dots.
Alright, sounds like a plan.
Stephen just woke up.
He did, oh wow, how nice. Maybe once he's up and about and he wants to join us, we would love to be able to say hi to him as well. Hi, how are you? Thank you for joining us, did you have a nice nap? Yes, okay, we'll give you some time to just join us if you want. I know you've just woken up and sometimes we like to do our own thing right after we wake up. So go ahead and feel free to do whatever you wanna do. But if you wanna join us in some craft activities, we would love to have you. So we'll, we'll let you make that decision when you're ready, okay? Sean, what do you and Stephen like to play together?
Hide and seek.
Ah, okay, very nice, and do you, do you prefer to hide or do you like to go find him?
Both.
Both, okay.
Y'all like hiding the best.
Okay, alright, wonderful, okay. So I'm done with two sides, I know you're probably ahead of me, y'all are doing faster, but I'm gonna quickly try to hurry up. So you said you did dots, right? On the other side, I think I'm gonna do some spirals because I think that would be a little bit faster for me and that would be a different design for us to see as well. But yeah, these are kind of like doodle patterns, so you know, anybody who likes doodling and has been doing some different, different kind of doodle patterns, y'all can do whatever pattern you like over here and that is also very, very nice to see. So hopefully, we will see a lot of different designs coming in from our viewers as well. And that's the fun part about creativity, right? Like you're trying to do something similar, but at the same time, you can so easily add your own touch to it. And we know a lot of our viewers love to do this kind of stuff, so it would be fantastic to see what's going on in their minds as well. And just like that, Deepi, I have to say that we were so amazed with what you did with the world map product. You know that image that you sent us?
Thank you so much. We just to finish that.
You are very welcome.
Because of that, we could finish it on time.
That was so amazing, you know, I mean, honestly, I think that is such a wonderful example of creative learning that I couldn't think of a better example. It's like, wow, good job with the designs on that as well, Sean. Very nice to see that and here is mine as well. So we both have this step done, which is nice. And look who's popping up from behind you. I guess he's also getting excited about the activity, cool, I think, maybe, oh wow, you're doing it too? Okay, very nice, go ahead, go ahead, you can go ahead and, you know, maybe Mama can help you do the cutting. Does he cut on his own? How old is he? How old is Stephen?
He's three.
Oh, I'm sure, I think he's gonna probably need a little help in cutting as well. Okay, so while he's catching up, maybe Sean, we can go ahead to the next step, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic, so what we're gonna do now is we're gonna flip this over, we're gonna turn it around and have the other side available to us, right? So this rectangular space that you see over here, that's where our message has to go. And we're gonna try to keep the message a little bit inside, okay? Don't go too close to these borders, we're gonna keep the message inside. Now, do you wanna write the same message or do you wanna write something different?
You can also, something like that.
Thank you teachers for helping us learn, for helping us learn everything.
Okay, sounds good, and you said you wanted to stick the pencil, right?
Yes.
Okay, do you have a pencil around you which is small enough, tiny enough to fit in there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect, awesome. So guys, this is a wonderful little use of those tiny little bits of pencils that get remaining as well. So next time you have a little tiny pencil remaining, please don't throw it away. Do something interesting with that as well, like, like, like putting it together in a little frame for somebody. And you have some glue, like a fevi call or some glue with you?
Yeah, feather stick.
Okay, so fevi stick is also good. You may have to try whether it's gonna be able to hold the pencil against the paper because sometimes, you know, it's a little not, right, so fevi calls a little bit stronger in terms of how much adhesive power it has. But you can try it with a fevi stick as well and if that works for you, then that's great. Okay, otherwise, maybe you can grab some fevi call later on and do it or any other kind of glue. Sometimes sellotape works as well, if you have that around. But I've never used fevi stick to stick the pencil on paper, but it would be nice if you can try it and tell us whether that works or not, okay? So I have just gone ahead and applied some glue on my pencil and I'm gonna stick the pencil before I write the message so that I know how much space I have in order to write my message, okay? So I'm gonna go ahead and just stick the pencil on the paper and you can do the same thing if you want to. Yeah, I'm using my frame vertically because the pencil is tall. But like you can see in the examples, we do have frames which we've done horizontally. So you can do, you can do a horizontal, like a sleeping frame or a horizontal frame or a vertical one, whatever you like. Alright, fantastic, so we have our pencil which is stuck, I think mine stuck pretty well. Alright, awesome, and it works, so we, we all know now that fevi stick works to stick the pencil as well, awesome. Good stuff, good stuff, good to learn new things, right? And then you have a little bit of paper left over here where we're gonna write the message. You're gonna have to write a little smaller, little teeny tiny, okay? And you can go ahead and write it directly with paper, I mean, with, with a pen or with pencil, whatever you like. Alright, awesome. A black sketch pen, okay, I'm gonna use the same black pen that I used for drawing the designs as well. So I'm gonna write, "Thank you for sharpening my mind" because the pencil is sharpened and I want my teachers to see that, just like I sharpened the pencil, they helped me sharpen their minds. Alright, so just go ahead and write it in any way you like. So think. Q. For sharpening. And you guys can write whatever message you want. The idea is that if you can stick something or create something which is interesting that works with the message that you've thought of, then it makes the frame look a little bit 3D. And I mean, you know, sometimes you could do different things with it, like somebody who wants to stick a photograph of their teacher. If you have a photograph of your teacher and you wanna stick it in the frame, that would be a nice idea as well. So I don't have one of those handy with me, but if somebody has that, then that would be fun too. You can put your teacher's name in there if you want. If you know which teacher you're giving it to, you could put, you could put their name, you could put your own name as well, saying that it's from you. Whatever you like, this is entirely your space to do something fun. Alright, so while Sean is writing his message, I'm just gonna keep maybe one more frame ready. So in case we wanna do one more, we have something ready to go as well for that. Awesome, okay, good job. So we're ready for the last and final step then, which is that we're going to roll up the patterns from the other side and stick them in over here so that we have our frame completed. Okay, so let's go ahead and do that. You can start with any side that you want. I'm gonna put a small little fold over here because that's where my glue is gonna go. So just a small little fold like this, I've just folded the paper a little bit. And I'm gonna go ahead and apply some glue over there. Okay, so we just go ahead and apply some glue. And then once the glue is applied, you can just go ahead and roll that up and stick the part which had the glue. So you get like a little roll of paper over here. Okay, and you may have to hold that down for a second depending on what kind of glue you're using. Oh wow, you're done, that was quick. Very well done indeed Sean, I'm impressed. I am absolutely impressed, good job, mine is not yet stuck. Yeah, so guys, who are facing any kind of difficulty in sticking it, you can just go ahead and use some, you know, force over here to make it stick as well or some more glue if you don't think you have enough glue like me. But yeah, I think it's not too bad, I think we can do it, Sean's done it. Alright, so just go ahead and stick that. And then we go ahead and repeat that on all the four sides so that all your parts of the frame are stuck. Sound good, sound easy enough, Sean?
Yes, I did for the both sides.
Oh wow, you did it for both sides, see, I'm telling you, you guys are so much faster than I am. I have to remember that I am dealing with experts here. I better hurry up because I don't wanna fall behind, I wanna be up to speed with you guys. Okay. So what do you say, Sean, do we wanna do one more after this?
Yep.
Yep, okay, so let's think, let's start thinking about the message for that one while we're doing this. Was there a different message, a special message that you had in mind that you wanted to use? How about doing something with space because you like space?
About space.
You're done, wow, awesome stuff, good job, very, very well done indeed, very well done. See, you're ahead of me. I have to just finish mine and while I'm finishing that up, let's go back to thinking about the message. So what were you saying, I'm sorry, I didn't completely get you. The sword, okay, alright. So maybe, what soars in the sky? Can you think of something that soars in the sky?
A rocket. A rocket.
A rocket, okay, that sounds good. So do you have... An airplane, okay. Do you have some clay maybe around you? Do you have some clay?
Yes.
Yes? How about making a tiny little rocket with the clay? Do you know how to make a rocket with the clay?
It's right, right.
Okay, hang on one second, I'm gonna join you in just one second. What color are you using for your rocket?
I'm using pink for the middle part.
Okay, so you're gonna teach me how to make a rocket?
I only don't know.
Oh, I thought you knew, but we can try it together, no worries, we'll be trying together, okay? So I'm done with one, just like you. I have a blue paper for me, so something that looks good in blue is maybe red. I'm gonna make a red rocket, is that okay? Yeah, yeah, any color, any color, any color. So we're gonna make, you know, now you know how little space we have, right? So we are gonna make a small rocket which can fit inside our frame, alright? So just take the clay and maybe a little bit of clay, very little bit of clay and make a little longish line like this, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay? And maybe what we can do is we can give, you know, the top part which is, looks a little bit conical or triangular on a rocket, maybe we can add that with a different color. How about that? Should we add that with a different color? So I can maybe use a little bit of blue for that, I have some dark blue clay. So I'm gonna use blue. So just a little bit of a blue ball and I'm gonna make the ball into a drop like this, like a droplet of water, like a three-dimensional droplet of water.
Yes.
Okay, and then go ahead and join these two guys. So we have something that is with a conical glue on top and red at the bottom and then what goes on the bottom of the rockets?
Fire.
Fire, okay, so let's make some fire, how about that? Orange also, yes, orange fire is good, yellow fire is also good. So I'm gonna use maybe some yellow to make some flames. What kind of shape do flames have?
Flames are zigzag shapes.
Zigzag shapes, so is something like that, okay?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So you can go ahead, I've not stuck it on the paper, I've just kept it against that so that I can see the size and just to check whether it fits. But you can go ahead and stick it as well if you want. Or actually, you know what, don't stick it yet because we have yet to draw our patterns. So don't stick it yet, but you can just make it for the size if you want. So some zigzag patterns for the flames. And then we will set our rocket aside while we maybe make the patterns like we did on the other one because we gotta do the patterns on the opposite side to where the rocket goes, right? So we'll probably just make the patterns and then come back to sticking the rocket a little bit later. So I'm making my flames by just making zigzag lines like you said and these zigzag lines are just gonna go in any direction, right? Because flames don't have a specific shape, they just go kind of all over the place, right? So go ahead and make as many or as little flames as you want. And maybe what we can do is we can add a little window for somebody to see outside from our rocket. So I'm gonna add a yellow window. You can add whatever color you want for your window.
I'll add a green window.
A green window, okay, that sounds good, that sounds really nice. I'm just gonna add a little bit of blue at the bottom of my rocket as well, just like this. So my rocket is almost ready, but I'm gonna set my rocket aside and because I know you're much faster than me, is it okay if I go ahead and start making my patterns?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you. But you know what, if you have your paper ready, do you have your paper ready to make the patterns? Okay, awesome. So are we gonna use some space-themed patterns this time? What could some nice space-themed patterns be?
Stars.
Stars, yes, that is true, we could make some stars. Very nice, that's a nice idea. We can make some stars. What kind of stars shall we make? We can make stars that, and this is like a rough piece of paper, so I'm doing it over here right now. We can make stars which are just like this or we can make stars which are like this or we could make stars which are like this. So we have, oh, thank you for the suggestion of stars, we have stars coming in from so many different directions. So we have three different types of stars over here and you guys can do whichever style you want. You can do a whole new style as well. But remember, these corners are what we had cut out before, so I'm gonna now go ahead and cut that out before I forget. And moon, okay, we have an example or we have a suggestion from the audience to make some moons as well. Yes, we could absolutely make some moons. So we can do stars on one side, we can do moons on the other side. And if there's any more suggestions, please definitely keep them coming because we would love to clouds. Okay, we could do clouds as well. And Sean and Stephen can of course suggest more things as well. So you guys have any other ideas of what you wanna do? Alright, so are you ready to make some patterns, Sean? Hearts are nice as well. Oh wow, you are, oh my goodness, that was so quick, you're already done with your rocket and your patterns, wow, okay, I better hurry up. Alright, I am going to hurry up and make some stars. How do you do it so quickly?
I had the paper ready.
Ah, okay. You guys amaze me, absolutely, each and every time. And we loved the pop art ice cream frame that you made as well last time. So I'm sorry that we couldn't get you on the live last time, but thank you so much for doing the activity. It was very nice to see it. Did you get a chance to share that with some of your friends?
Yes, yes, we shared it.
How nice. And did they like it too?
Yes.
Wonderful. So do you know which teachers are you gonna gift this or send this image to, Sean?
My class teacher.
Alright, and can you tell us your class teacher's name?
Miss Rena.
Fantastic, and tell us something wonderful about her, tell us something that makes you happy and you want to thank her for it.
Eevee, she teaches me Eevee and I love nature.
Ah, okay, that's nice.
And I thank her for teaching me about nature.
Alright, very cool, very cool. Who else? Because we have two frames, right? So do you have another? And your maths teacher? Very nice, and who's your maths teacher?
Her name is Miss Costa South.
Okay, and why do you like your maths teacher?
I like her because I like maths.
Alright, very nice. And are they helping you out with the whole, are you doing online school right now? Do you have online school?
Last year, she was my class teacher, last year.
Okay. And they are all teaching you online right now, is it? Very nice, very nice. And this year, for so many of us, our moms and dads and caretakers at home have in a way become our teachers, right? So for all those of you who are very happy that your moms and your dads and your different caretakers at home are helping you out by becoming teachers as well this year, it would be fantastic to make a frame for them as well. So we have two right now, which of course Sean has decided who he's gonna give it to, but he could also make one, yeah? Does mom or dad help you with your studies and with learning and things like that?
Does mom help with your studies? Yeah.
Yes, so you know, when they're not looking this time, you're gonna surprise them, you're gonna make a little card for them as well, how about that? Yes, mama's sitting right beside you, so now she knows what I've asked you to do. But you could still, you could still make it and I'm sure it would be special and she would really appreciate that as well.
I wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. So I mean, even without the lockdown or without online schooling, parents of course are the first teachers that in a way kids have, right? So it's absolutely Teacher's Day is something that is for any kind of teacher and it's wonderful to be able to include our parents, even sometimes grandparents or you know, anybody else who you feel has taught you something interesting.
Dad are great artists.
Wow, that is so cool, that is so cool that you have so many wonderful artists in your family. That is wonderful. We would love to be able to see some of the stuff that they do as well. Do you think you have something that you can show us or some of your doodling that you can show us?
No, no, but I can tell you about my mom's dad.
Yes, please do, please do.
My mom's dad draws some shapes and does those shapes, we cover an elephant.
Wow, that sounds really cool, that sounds really cool. And do you try to learn a little bit of stuff from him as well?
Yes, I try, but sometimes I fail.
Well, it's okay, trying makes perfect, right? It's all a process, you don't have to get it right the first time round.
Keep practicing, you will get it.
Exactly, exactly, and that's the best part, you get to keep practicing and trying your hardest and then as you do it, I'm sure we'll get there. And we would love to be able to see some of this stuff.
Hi Grace, hi.
It's wonderful to see all your friends as well, right?
Yes, they all joined, so thank you so much for joining.
Yes, absolutely, thank you indeed. Alright, are you done with writing your messages where, Sean?
I wrote this message for him.
How nice. Yes, I know the space is tiny, right? Okay, can you move that a little closer to the screen so we can see it? Wow, so well done, so beautiful indeed, so beautiful. Alright, fantastic, so we are having two little frames that we've made already, which was super quick and super nice. So we are almost done with the activity part of today's session. And just like we mentioned in the beginning, we do have a giveaway contest with this week's session as well. So we would love to be able to see everybody's creative activities, everybody's creative appreciation messages for their teachers that you're doing this year. So please do share that with us, we will be waiting to see the messages, the instructions for the contest. Oh wow, there's one more, okay, beautiful. Mom made it, how nice. How very, very nice, that is so cool. So in just about a minute, we will do a little show with all of our creations, so keep your frames handy and we would love to be able to do that. So tell me, what was the message again, what do I need to write?
Thank you for helping us so.
Thank you for helping us so, okay, that is the message. So I'm gonna first put my rocket in so that I know how much space I have. And there we go, so there's my rocket and some flames to go along with that. So there we go, the rocket and the flames are in place. And now I'm gonna write my message as well. Hi, fantastic, and maybe some stars in the background? Where the planet is going off to? What planet, is this planet going to Saturn this time?
Is it going to Saturn? It's going to Uranus.
Okay, alright, very nice indeed, very nice indeed, okay. So, very happy to hear that your daughter is excited to do the activity. So thank you for sharing that with us and Sean, do you wanna show us yours whenever you're ready? Oh wow, look at that, so wonderful, that looks fantastic. I love the flower and the rocket and the pencil, this is absolutely amazing, Sean. Thank you so much for doing all that with us and I hope you enjoyed it. This is absolutely amazing, Sean. Thank you so much for doing all that with us and I hope you enjoyed it.
Thank you for helping us.
We absolutely loved doing that. So thank you for thanking us, but it's entirely our pleasure indeed to be able to do that with you. So we're just gonna switch up to the front view again before we say goodbye to everybody. So. Thank you for joining us and thank you for doing the activity. For everybody who's watching, we do have a giveaway contest with this as well. So please do. Share your little frames of appreciation that you're making for your teachers with us. We would love to see. The lovely messages and the lovely cards that you share. We would absolutely love to see that. Do you have anything else you wanna say to everybody before we sign off? Sean, Vithi, anybody wanna?
Watch this slide and thank you for participating to do this app, this app and we absolutely love the magic products and that. Two years ago and he loves it. Africa is his favorite because it takes time, does take time. A lot of time still, my dad loves doing that. So we really love that way and.
That is so amazing. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. We're so excited to know that you like mapology because it is absolutely a series of products that we. Um, love ourselves and we do keep coming out with more and more things in mapology. So we now actually have. A new product that is coming out in mapology which is. Um, a product that works with a mobile application. So it's got a augmented reality application that works with the world map. Which allows you to scan the puzzle pieces and learn more and more about the country. Sorry about that. So you can actually get that as well and we've had to see if we can send one out to you and we'd love to see. Your experience with that. If you can share what you liked about it or what you did not like about it. So we would love to be able to hear about that as well from you.
Bye, thank you.
You're very welcome. And you know what? You've given me an idea that maybe we should do something on solar system as well because you like the outer space theme so much. So we try to see if we can start thinking about a product in the solar system space as well. Wow, sounds great. And if you have some cool ideas that you want us to include in the solar system game or puzzle that we make. You can definitely share that with us. We would love to have your inputs and ideas for that. Wow.
He wouldn't stop talking. He'll keep talking.
It's a pleasure to talk to you. It's wonderful to have kids on the live who like to talk, right? Because that's what it's all about. So. Thank you for the suggestion. I hope you had fun in your party. Tell me one, one, one most amazing thing that happened with the outer space theme in your party.
Eating the moon rocks.
That sounds really yummy. Do they taste yummy too? Yes?
So I made a few moon rocks. Oreo biscuits in that and left them.
Wow, that sounds so cool. I've never been to the moon, so I don't know what moon rocks actually taste like, but I think that sounds really amazing. And, and, and that's amazing that mama made your quarantine birthday so wonderful, right? So special thank you to mama for that. Very creative ideas. Um, that she keeps coming up with for both of you all. So great, fantastic. And keep thinking about more and more creative stuff. Keep sharing that with us. We'd love to be able to. See and hear and follow all the wonderful things that you're doing. So. Um, I think we're ready to sign off and thank you once again for joining us. We look forward to seeing everybody's frames and. We will be waiting to see your creative activities.
Yes, thank you so much.
Alright, thank you. Bye bye.
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 Take care. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Bye bye.